I burst out laughing and Colin goes, "What's so funny?" And I said...
Welcome to the May 2nd business meeting. We have a couple of commissioners who won't be here today. Commissioner Savas is in Washington DC begging for money that you taxpayers paid to come home to rest. And Commissioner Humbertston is in Salem.
Humbertston.
Did I say it wrong?
Yes.
Is in Salem testifying, also trying to bring the dollars you pay back to Clackamas County.
So what's Ken testifying? Because you're going to go down for justice reinvestment.
Yes.
And you're going to, and is he doing the same thing? Different?
Yes, he is. Justice reinvestment.
With that, I would ask the county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes. First commissioner staff support today Nate Boderman County Council, Mary Rathke, clerk to the board, roll call Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first up, we have citizen communications. We have Les Poole and Joe Greenman. So please join us. Tell us where you're from.
Les Poole, I'm from Clackamas County, Gladstone. Yeah, I wish Ken the best in Salem. They're writing checks that can't possibly be cashed. And I don't know where the money is going to come from for cap and trade and everything else. But it's pretty out of control down there, just like Commissioner Schrader thought it would be. My focus, of course, is here in the county and on transportation and citizen involvement and accountability. So whenever I come down, those are usually what I'm talking about. And I say that because some folks encourage me to come and others probably wonder why that guy's here almost every week. But I'm not here about myself. That's one thing I can promise you. I am troubled by what's going on in Salem and I don't expect the county to take any dramatic action or have a dramatic influence because I think it's out of control and I don't think anyone can stop it. In fact, I know that. So it's very troubling. On the plus side, I appreciate the comments and the support I've had for evening meetings and the fact that I'm able to come here and this gentleman's able to show up. And if we talk three minutes and 30 seconds instead of three minutes, we're no longer cut off. You don't hear the chair saying next and then you leave and a person comes up, talks, the chair says next. That was what, that's what it was like when I showed up here in 2011. So I bring you a mixed message quite frequently and it's not to play with your heads and it's not to play with mine. I would hope that folks, since I do focus on transportation, would take a look in the newspaper. There's a letter from the director of ODOT and that's Matt Garrett. And Matt's a good man. He's got a really tough job. When we help transportation, we help everyone. If you read the article, what's conspicuously missing there is I-205 and the subject of tolling. And I can think of no more direct message to the legislature and to the county and to metro from the public that they've had it up to here. People are, people are maxed out. Doesn't matter what party you belong to, doesn't matter who you voted for commissioner last time or whether or not you voted for that failing governor. What really matters is that the public has reached a peak and you're going to feel it and you're going to see it and I hope you handle it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Joe Greenman. I'm a resident of West Lynn and I'm joining you this morning in my capacity as the chair of the Governor's Commission on Senior Services. GCSS for short is a commission appointed by the governor comprised of 21 citizens of our state and two members of the Legislative Assembly, one from the Senate, one from the House. I'm coming here today to talk to you all here on the Board of County Commissioners and I've been visiting some local city councils as well because I'm happy to report that for the first time since I've been on the commission, which began in 2012, we are having a commission meeting in a community here in our state. Specifically, June 13th, from 9:30 to 4:00, we'll be holding our commission at the West Lynn Adult Community Center. Our goal and objective, of course, is to bring the commission and the work that it does closer to the people who we hope that it serves. The purpose of the commission is to advise the governor about the needs of elderly citizens, both in terms of public policy and at the state budget, and also to promote responsible advocacy of elderly and senior citizens in the state of Oregon. And we meet six times a year for a full day. We study public programs and just other private and public initiatives going on in our state that benefit senior citizens in the state of Oregon. And we make that information available to the governor and we, in many cases, end up promoting public policy. And in rare cases, we even sometimes endorse or potentially oppose legislation that's being considered in the state legislature during their regular and their interim sessions. So we're in the process right now of already communicating and working with the Clackamas County Local Area Agency on Aging. They're certainly going to be a part of our meeting on the 13th. But I just want to make you, the public here in Clackamas County, aware that this meeting's going to occur on June 13th at the West Lynn Adult Community Center from 9:30 to 4:00. That we want to welcome anybody to come. We're going to be taking public comment at multiple times throughout the day because really our whole, our hope and objective is to hear from a lot of people. You probably haven't heard of us and that's mainly because we hold our meetings in an office building somewhere in Salem typically. And it's just not, not the kind of thing that I think encourages public participation, which is why when Governor Brown appointed me as the chair last fall, I made my primary goal to get one of our meetings out into a town or city in our state to get the public to participate. I'm from West Lynn, so I sort of invoked my privilege as the chair to do it in my home turf and I really enjoyed working with the city of West Lynn to get that Adult Community Center for, for June 13th. And we invite you all as the commission and members of the public here in Clackamas County, if they're interested in this issue, to please come and attend and participate.
Great. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Just a few kind of clarifying questions, which I'm really glad you're doing this. I think that all the state commissions, if they can, they should do some road work because it really makes a big difference. So what's the definition of elderly? Is there like an age cutoff?
It is. In the statute, it's 60 years old or over. So don't shoot the messenger. Don't shoot the messenger. I didn't make that definition. And I certainly don't want to put anybody into a category that they don't want to find themselves in. But that, under the statute, the commission is certainly oriented toward focusing on issues that impact that 60 and over population in our state.
Yeah. And, and I asked a little bit out of fun because I'm like, "Okay." I guess we're, some of us that are in that category still are surprised, I guess. I was talking to a friend the other day who was 65, like myself, and she said, "Oh, just gave my age away." And we're like, "How did this happen?" You know? So I'm glad to know that we're being looked out for. But we're, we're one of the lucky, we're seniors that I think have stability, have a place to stay, have resources. So I guess my next question would be, what are you really seeing as the main issues of needs of seniors that, that really need to be addressed in this state so far?
Well, I think personally, so the commission focuses, in my view, disproportionately on frail, vulnerable and low income adults. And I think that's as it should be. That's the population with the highest level of need. So we spend a lot of time advocating for programs that assist those citizens. However, I'm very interested also in, from the capacity of the commission, on how we can promote seniors also who are still employed, who may own and operate businesses, employ other Oregonians, or are heavily involved in volunteer work and are integrating in the community and providing some sort of service or benefit on an active and ongoing basis. Because we want to know how we can continue to have age-friendly communities and integrate seniors into, into the, into their greater communities as opposed to the problem sometimes that occurs of isolation, which leads to diminished health and a lot of the other types of issues. But you ask what the key issue is. I think for seniors, and this probably won't shock you because it probably bleeds over into all the other demographics, is housing. I think we've got a situation where we have very high housing costs in proportion to the amount of economic growth that occurs in the state and the, in the incomes that support the housing cost. And not only that, but we have a demographic wave that's going to be hitting for more need for seniors' housing of all different types. And hopefully, it's the type of housing that integrates the seniors more thoroughly with the other demographics of the community and doesn't have an isolating type of dynamic to it, which in some cases we've had. And hopefully, as we continue our work as the commission, we work with state and local government and other entities, we learn about things like more creative zoning that might occur, where we might be able to create new models of housing. Multi-generational housing, for instance, is something that a lot of people who have really good thoughts in this area talk a lot about, but we've got some regulatory structures in place that sometimes might create obstacles to develop those types of housing. So ultimately, that's the type of thing that I think will promote seniors, but also frankly, the overall community. Because I think as, as time passes, we're learning that, that we don't want to just sort of send seniors to a place where, "Oh, it's time for you to retire and you go play bridge and you're hanging out with other senior citizens."
Pickleball.
We want you in our schools. We want you in our communities. We want you shopping in the stores during, and eating in the restaurants. And we want you integrating with the, whatever the interesting community events are on any given week.
Thank you for that answer. Can I do another follow-up?
Sure.
I'm very interested in this, not just because I'm a senior, but having grown up in an Italian family where all the seniors lived either with us or next door to us. So you had that kind of familial piece. I know the other day, I'm going to look at Mr. Schmidt here. Didn't we have a, I think, a coffee talk concerning loneliness and elderly citizens that occurred?
We have or about to.
Or about to have one, yeah. Because that, that notion of isolation resonated with me. Certainly, I'm not, none of us is isolated yet. I'm not isolated as a senior because I'm still one of the employed seniors. But that, that worries me a little bit. You know, once you don't have that focus, where do you put your focus? How do you still be participatory in the local community and feel like you're making a difference with people? I think that's a huge, huge piece. And I do have a very close friend my age who is actually modeling that kind of good behavior. And one other thing, what is the status of Oregon Project Independence? I'm assuming it's still alive and healthy and being funded by the legislature?
Yes. So OPI received, for the, for the senior-only portion of it, they, they wanted to have OPI extend below the senior age category, at least the advocates had wanted that, and which is fairly costly. The governor's budget promoted full funding for the current structure of the program. And that budget hasn't moved through the legislature yet. So we don't know if the Ways and Means Committee is going to follow the governor's recommendation, although we're receiving positive signals that it's received well and that it's a priority for decision-makers on the Ways and Means Committee.
And the reason I asked is years ago, when I was in the legislature and John Mullen was one of our employees here, it was always one of those programs that oftentimes got put on a chopping block. And he lobbied very diligently and I remember working with him at the time to make sure because it was such a good program. So I'm always kind of want to make sure that we're still...
Yeah, it's one, it's a program that's at risk because it's a, it's a health-related program, but it doesn't receive any federal Medicaid match. So it's completely general fund. So legislators, legislators struggle with it. And you're right, it has been on the chopping block in the past and we're happy to see that it's in a little bit better position in this session.
Well, thank you for coming today and thank you for indulging.
Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Hi.
Quite a treat to have you here sharing with us. So I've got a question for you. Years ago, Clackamas County decided to give back its provision of Medicaid services to the state. We used to provide all of them. And you are chairing the state advisory committee. You're a Clackamas County resident. I am just curious about your thoughts about that move and if it's, you know, anything you want to say about it. I've struggled with, you know, local continuum of care and is it best to have at the local level? Is it better to have the separation and have those services provided by the state? I know that in every community around the state, it's done differently.
Yes.
And as a Clackamas County resident, you're very sophisticated on these issues. I'd just be interested in what your two cents would be on that.
Well, I'll tell you my, I'll invoke my personal opinion. I won't speak on behalf of the commission. My view is I, I would prefer to see more state control over the provision of the Medicaid program. I have some misgivings about what I've seen with regard to the AAA management in some of the, in those, I think they're called type A counties, right? Okay, good. I'm getting positive feedback, so. So like, for instance, the, and there are these council government type structures where they'll have a contract out to a AAA. I just think that frankly, from the position of a taxpayer, I think the state gets better bang for the buck and better efficiency when it's run through, essentially through DHS local office as opposed to a contract with, with a AAA. And I think the AAA's frankly are better served in that more traditional role of being the advocate for the local senior, for the local senior population as opposed to also having sort of this administrative function where they have to run the Medicaid program, do all the determinations and the, and the case management functions, et cetera. But that's just one, one person's opinion. I'd be interested to know your experience here in Clackamas County, if you feel like, if you feel like the local DHS office is, is doing a good job or if you think that there might be some gaps or anything missing. We'd be interested in that feedback on the commission because we're just, we actually, one of the roles that we play on the commission is for the COGS, for the COGS to continue to receive their contract from DHS. So they're DHS contractors. They have to have their contract reviewed biannually. And we actually get those contracts on the commission and we farm, farm them out to commissioners to be part of the contract review team and advise the Department of Human Services on how the contract, and it's basically like an RFP type of document. So if an individual commissioner thinks that there's some gaps or something missing or something that needs to be addressed, we bring that up and submit those, those viewpoints to the Department of Human Services.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for coming. Really appreciate it and appreciate your service.
Yeah.
Keep in touch.
And you may also look at our advisory committee, that Clackamas County, I'm sorry, I can't remember what it's called. We have an advisory committee that, you know...
Come testify on the 15th at the meeting. We should make, make sure we make those linkages.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
We one time, when we first got here, made a change not looking to advisory committee before we made it. And because none of us really knew there was one. Now we do. And so you might reach out to them and maybe we can find out, maybe Gary knows the name.
I believe it's the Area Agency Committee on Aging.
That's right.
AAA. We have a county...
Yeah. We should make sure they know about this meeting.
Yeah.
They do. We've, we've made contact, they're actually going to be on our agenda. They're, they're going to make a nice presentation to us and we're thankful for that.
Right.
This is something I didn't know anything about, so I appreciate you coming today and thank you, I'm, I'm sure you're volunteering to do this and thank you for your effort. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for your time and attention this morning.
Thank you. Well, with that, we're moving on to our public hearing and we have three, four on the list. Gary?
Yes, four public hearings. The first commissioner's is a board order approving boundary change proposal CL-19-001, annexation to Tri-City County Service District. Presenting is Nate Boderman County Council and Ken Martin, Boundary Change Consultant.
Welcome.
This is an annexation to Tri-City Sewer District, which as you know, serves as the wholesale provider of sewers in Oregon City, Gladstone and West Lynn. Whenever we have an annexation to a city, we end up having a subsequent annexation to the district. This property was recently annexed Oregon City and we're just now annexing it to the district. There is a sewer line available adjacent to the property and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions? We do this all the time. If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-001, Annexation to Tri-City County Service District.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a boundary order, a board order Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-001, Annexation Tri-City's County, or yeah, Tri-City County Service District. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The next item?
Is a board order approving Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-002, Annexation to Sunrise Water Authority. Nate and Ken will also present on this.
The Sunrise Water Authority serves the area in North Clackamas County, including the city of Happy Valley. The school district in that area, North Clackamas School District, is proposing to build a new elementary school. They've already gotten their land use approvals from the city and now we need to annex it into the district so that it can have water service. The district is building a new water line adjacent to the property that will provide adequate service and we'd recommend approval.
All right. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions? Okay. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-002, Annexation to the Sunrise Water Authority.
It's, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a board order for Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-002, Annexation to Sunrise Water Authority. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Next public hearing, a board order setting the final assessments for the Starview Lane LID, presenting is Mike Baze from the Department of Transportation and Development.
We haven't had one of these in a while. Last one, we ended up...
We'll actually have Ken Kent here from DTD presenting today.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is Kenneth Kent. Work with Department of Transportation Development in the Engineering Division and manage a local improvement district program for Clackamas County. Today, I'm here before you requesting that the board approve an order setting the final assessment for the Starview Lane LID project. I'd like to briefly summarize the LID process and how we arrived here today at this hearing. LID is a tool that can be used by a group of property owners to share in the cost of transportation improvements. It's a financing mechanism available to county residents where if enough property owners agree and ultimately sign a petition in support of a project, the county will work together with the citizens in order to construct a public improvement and then collect assessments from the benefiting neighbors to pay for the cost of the project. The citizens of Starview Lane gathered the requisite number of signatures on a petition with 95% support for the project, allowing it to move ahead in the LID process and move on to construction. Starview Lane itself is located off of Creek Road, which is north of Henrissey Road in the Beaver Lake area, north of Beaver Lake. The assessment for this LID were established on a length of road traveled basis. Essentially, the project was broken into three sections. The improvement covered approximately a quarter mile. And then the assessments were allocated based on area, the portions of the road that the residents used. Starview Lane involved improvements of, as I mentioned, approximately a quarter mile and consisted of road-based repair, some storm drainage improvements, and then a full asphalt overlay. On April 11th, 2019, the board accepted the final report for the Starview Lane LID and set today's hearing to hear any objections on the final assessments. Per that order, the Department of Transportation and Development sent letters, notices to all the property owners outlining the total cost of the LID and then their individual assessment. And essentially, just to kind of clarify, the total assessment for the Starview Lane LID is $65,549.51. The assessment rates for the three sections of the LID include $2,064.81 for one share. There's $2,943.18 for two shares and then $3,599.90 for 16 shares. It's a total of 19 shares, so there are 19 properties that benefited from this local improvement project. The county has received no objections to the final assessment amount and based on the final report and cost of the project approved and accepted by the board on April 11th, 2019. Staff is recommending that the board approve the order before it today, setting the final assessments as listed on exhibit A attached to the, the board order. Once the final assessment is approved, county staff will then send an invoice to each of the property owners, giving them a 30-day period to either pay the final assessment or apply for financing to pay back the assessment over a 10-year period through the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions? So is this a public road or a private road?
It's a public road, but non-maintained by the county.
Yeah, there's a, and a share is, I assume that's frontage on the road or acres or what?
Well, it was based on this, with any LID, the, the community can look at different ways of assessing it. Sometimes it's one share equal throughout. On this particular LID, they looked at property owners at the beginning of the road, travel a short, only the certain section.
Okay.
And then property owners at the rear, it's a, a dead-end road, no through connection, maybe travel more. So they looked at the cost of each portion of the road and those various improvements and then decided to divvy the costs up based on what section of the road you travel on.
Yeah, I think the last time we had one of these before us, which we approved and then actually decided not to approve it, this was, this would be a good method to do that. It's not the method they used at the time. All right. Well, with that, if nobody has any questions, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order setting the final assessments for Starview Lane Local Improvement District.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we approve a board order setting the final assessment for the Starview Lane Local Improvement District. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, sir.
Final public hearing today is a resolution approval for adoption of findings and establishing an exemption for a class of public improvement contracts for contemporaneous development. Presented by... presented by George Marleton, Procurement, Procurement Division Director.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. George Marleton, Procurement Division Director. This is the public hearing for the adoption of findings and a resolution establishing the exemption of a class of public improvement contracts for something called contemporaneous development. We previously discussed the proposed exemption during our April second, two thousand nineteen, policy session and I'll do a quick reminder of why we need this exemption. Multiple county departments and special districts have encountered situations where an entity is engaging in or planning to engage in a construction project and the county would benefit from being able to contract directly with that entity or their contractor to make additional public improvements in close proximity to that project. The county needs to be able to directly contract and so that's part of what this exemption does, allows us to direct the contract with the owner or the landowner. During our April second policy session, Commissioners asked that we change the exemption to add in a requirement that the board be, provided notice prior to using this exemption. The change was added to the, the draft and it is in your packet. For the board to grant exemption for a class of public improvement projects, it must approve a definition of the class of contracts, which is in the packet, and two main findings. The first is that the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism in awarding the public improvement contracts. And two, that the awarding of public improvements under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings to the county or to the public. And again, the findings that are in the packet overview all those. The notice of the draft findings and class definition was published in the Daily Journal of Commerce on April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and on the county procurement website, and we did not receive any comments or feedback or concerns. Staff recommends the board approve the resolution adopting the findings and establishing exemption for contemporaneous development. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Is this your first time in front of us?
It is.
Welcome. You did a great job.
Thank you.
So, any questions? I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting the findings and establishing an exemption for a class of public improvement contracts for contemporaneous development.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we approve a resolution adopting the findings and establishing exemption for a class of public improvement contracts for contemporaneous development. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. Next is the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement, Amendment Number One with Multnomah County Department of Human Services, Aging and Disability Services Division for Veterans Directed Care Services. Approval to apply for Fiscal Year 2018 Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project Housing and Urban Development Grants. Approval of a Housing and Community Development 2019 Action Plan. Approval of a construction contract between Clackamas County and D and D Concrete and Utilities for the Jennings Lodge Pedestrian Improvement Project. Approval of a change order number six for the Fenton Avenue Improvement Project, Kerr Contractors of Oregon. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Sunrise Water Authority for the extra paving of Sunny Creek Lane, Southeast Meadow Brookway, and Southeast one hundred nineteenth Court within the Sunrise Water Authority current project. Under our Finance Department, Approval of a Contract with Language Line Services for On-Call Interpretive Services for Clackamas County Departments. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under Public and Government Affairs, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Newburgh Regarding Payment of Services Related to Willamette Falls Lock State Commission. Under County Council, Approval of a Settlement Agreement in the Case of Castro versus Clackamas County, Chris Hoy and All. Approval of a Board Order Related to a Previously Denied Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change Application, which was previously heard on March second, two thousand nineteen. Under Community Corrections, Approval of Software License Agreement with Correct Tech for Community Corrections. And the Development Agency, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas River Water and Clackamas County Development Agency relating to Clackamas Regional Center Mobility Improvement Project. And Approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Disposition Agreement with Bottling Group LLC. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
I see counsel, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification on consent agenda item. Under County Council, the previously denied comprehensive plan amendment and zone change application, that was previously denied at the March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Oh.
Land use hearing.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
All right. Let me see. Now I'm lost. Do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Martha. You do this one.
Oh, I get to make the motion. So, okay. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is county administrator updates.
Commissioners, some good news. As you know, most of you, all of you attended the first installment of Clack Co. Academy, which is where we give local residents the opportunity to learn more about Clackamas County government and the services and programs we provide. After the first meeting where you all attended, we received some outstanding feedback from the participants in the academy. One person in particular, Whitney, wrote, "Clackamas County has been such a wonderful place for us to live and everyone at the county has had such a willingness to help and provide information. It only confirms that we found the very best place to live." So thanks to Whitney and all the members of the academy for their participation. Thank you, Commissioners, for attending the first meeting where you did a form of speed dating, getting to talk with all of the participants. And for more information about Clack Co. Academy, any member of the public can go to the county website, clackamas.us, and search for Clack Co. Academy. Speaking of the county website, as you know from last week, the county website has been reimagined, re-envisioned, updated as of last Saturday. It looks fantastic and is much more ease of use, better to access information, and just is all around fantastic. So thank you again to the Public and Government Affairs and Technology Services teams for putting that together. And I couldn't end the day without commenting that this Saturday is a very important day. It is May the fourth. It is International Star Wars Day. For those Star Wars fans out there like myself, I'm wearing my, my Star Wars tie here. See, even county administrators have a sense of humor. My favorite quote is from the character Yoda, "Do or do not, there is no try," which is a fantastic leadership lesson for us all to know. Take the word "try" out of your vocabulary. We're either going to do something or we're not going to do something.
I'll try.
It's also Free Comic Book Day to help people, young people, any age, learn how to read with comics. So go to your local comic store for a free comic. So happy, may the fourth be with you, Commissioners. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'll probably talk too long as usual, but oh well. It's, I have the, I have her ladyship's cup with me today, so I get to talk. Okay, there we go. This is from England, by the way. I bought it when I was visiting my daughter. And every so often I, I drink from it to remind myself that, yes, I am a county commissioner. I can do this job. In case, Gary, may the force be with you. Really appreciate that. And starting with the notion of appreciation, we were, I think most of us attended the Parrot Creek Appreciation Lunch yesterday. Evidently, Parrot Creek, I talked, was talking with Commissioner Fisher, it's actually a regional asset. It not only serves youngsters in Clackamas County, it serves youngsters, youngsters throughout the region. So my hope is that we can actually work with Parrot Creek and start getting the region folks more involved and making sure that that program stays, you know, pulled together and that we get the work done that we need to get done to maintain the facility. So that was, thank you for that light bulb because I think we ought to expand, you know, helping that organization and expand, the ASK, expand its opportunities because we are not just serving youngsters within our borders. This is evidently in the tri-county region. So it was fun to go. I think we all donated and, or, or we're there showing our donation with our presents and it was a good event with Greg, excuse me, Ed Gronky, who is a dear friend and has been a supporter of the organization for a while. Also, the, last evening, let's see, Jim and Ken and I went to our, I hate to say it, our favorite VFW, Veterans in Foreign War here in Oregon City. They're pretty close to the county hilltop here and they have one of the best views of Lammet Falls, I think, in the whole, in the whole area. And they did their annual flag retiring ceremony, which is a beautiful ceremony. And so they are the ones to contact, ladies and gentlemen, if you have old flags that need to be retired. They know how to do it appropriately with honor and with dignity. And again, how do we honor these, these flags that are no longer flyable because they've just been used so many times? So I wanted to thank them for that. I wanted to let folks know, I had an opportunity recently to meet with Andrew Hohn and John Isaacs of the Portland Business Alliance, and I mention that because we went to their big event the other day. And it was quite the, quite the event with lots of Stars and Stripes and Hoopla and awarding some of our key folks, recognizing actually some of the key folks in the region that do a lot of the work for us. I think the president of Oregon State University was there, our Oregon Housing, O H S U president was there. It really was a stellar group of folks and it's a fantastic organization of progressive businesses that is also very, very interested in getting involved in the housing conversation and how we generate revenue for that. So really nice to, to touch bases with them. Trying to think, oh, I want to do a little report on M P A C, the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee, which is the land use advisory committee to Metro. As Jim serves on the Transportation 2020 piece of this, as they're starting to look and pick at corridors, I'm really encouraging Metro and the staff, and we're going to have a meeting about this this coming week. We don't just look at corridors as transportation pieces. We have to also take a look at what that means for the land use surrounding the corridors, particularly in relationship to housing, what that looks like, what that means. What do we do for our permitting? What do we do for our codes? I'm seeing Martha, Martha Fritz is in the audience. She's our planner. So you get what I'm trying to talk about is that transportation is key, but what we surround transportation with is critically important and we want to do it correctly in this region. I often remind people that I grew up outside of New York City, but I've lived in Oregon my whole adult life. But I remember the redevelopment there was the projects. And we all know how that, outside of the Bronx in particular, when I'd go into the city and, you know, you see these big, huge, tall buildings. And of course, it was density. It was redevelopment. But it really didn't look at things through a cultural and diversity lens as well. I think that we're going to, we're going to fix that. So as we move forward with corridors, we want to, we want to look to what's been done in the past. And I certainly don't, don't want to see redevelopment that's, that's really going to isolate people, not allow them to get to where they need to go. And I think that I saw that growing up, unfortunately, in the area of Portchester and that, that whole, whole area. So I think we have the opportunity to do something bigger and better and with style and to do it differently here in this county. Okay, with that, I'm going to go to the word of the week. And I know our, our folks just left, but the word of the week, because it was such a big word, I thought, is contemporaneous. It is an adjective, existing, occurring, or originating during the same time. Did you know the first known use of the word contemporaneous dates back to, wow, this is crazy, sixteen fifty-six, seventeenth century? Today, the board passed a resolution that allows for contemporaneous development throughout the county. And this is a class of public improvement contracts. Okay, arts and culture in the county. All right. Clackamas Education Service District Art Show, Thursday, May second, five to seven P M. At our own C E S D at Ninety-seventh Avenue in Clackamas. And you'll view art by over a hundred and fifty middle and high school students from across Clackamas County. A lineup of speakers is sure to inspire art students. Learn about careers in art and other exciting ways to apply your interest in the arts. Oh, this is a fun one. Free-range poetry at Estacada Public Library, Saturday, May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, two P M. Estacada Public Library, floor room. The public is invited to bring a favorite poem or poetry by their own hand to read out loud or to just enjoy hearing others read. For more information, clackamasartsalliance.org. And by the way, we have a poet on staff and that would be Emmett Wheatfall, who is not only known as our diversity coordinator with all the fine work he does for our county, but he is also actually a well-recognized poet who does readings throughout the county. A couple more things. Basically, Lakewood in the arts is going to be opening up Singing in the Rain on, coming up soon here, I think.
It opened.
What?
It opened.
It did open already?
Yeah.
Oh, April twenty-sixth.
We need to get our tickets.
Oh, yeah, I do. Actually, I have tickets for May fifteenth, so why don't you come with me? We got the.
Let's look at that.
All right. Okay, let's do it. Okay, we'll do that. May fifteenth, the thing I like about it the most is like the guy who is like playing the lead looks just like, who's the actor?
Fred Astaire?
No, no, no. Fred Astaire was.
Richard Burton?
No, who's the?
Gene Kelly?
Gene Kelly.
It's not a true name, son.
No, but it looks like Gene, the two guys, they look like Gene Kelly and Donald O'Connor. I was like, whoa. And the young woman playing the role has kind of got red hair. I'm like, wow, they nailed it. They nailed it. So I'm really interested in seeing that because, well, I didn't know that there was a doppelganger of Gene Kelly out there. We'll have to put the word "doppelganger" in our words next week, I guess, too. And finally, I would also like to mention Clackamas Rep Theater. They're going to be starting with Sherwood, okay? Their play about Robin Hood, one of my favorite musicals, South Pacific. And then Queen's Girl in the World, and that's going to be an important one because that is a coming-of-age story of a young black woman in the sixties, I believe, in, in one of the larger cities. And that's, that's really going to be, I think, one that's actually going to be an original premiere in, in this, in the whole state, actually, this particular one. So we ought to get tickets to that, too, Sonia, to all of them.
Let's do it.
So I, I had a question, though.
Yeah.
So I have free-range chicken, so it's free-range poetry, just a bunch of poets walking around.
I think so. You ought to show up and tell us next week and give us a report. Okay, so thank you for, no, I'm done.
You're welcome. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So lots on our plate. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader, for all of your report because so much of what you said are things that I've been thinking a lot about. Mentioning about housing and homelessness as a priority that we are all working on. Just today in our consent agenda, we have an application going to HUD to look at a plan for homeless youth. We have other areas that we focus on all the time when it comes to housing homelessness. Doesn't always make the headlines, but we are working diligently on these efforts. There is a campaign that has been launched with a group of advocates called Here Together. I encourage folks to look on Facebook for that site, to like that site, to get updates on homelessness in the region. You can also, I'm reposting those on my Commissioner Fisher page. You can also like, like my Commissioner Fisher page to get updates on what we're doing regionally on looking at supportive housing for people who are struggling with homelessness. Because we know that the solution to homelessness is housing and we also know that it costs the public taxpayer twice as much to deal with the issues in healthcare and also in our criminal justice system. The price of homelessness is exorbitant to the taxpayer. So along those lines, it really takes all of us working together. I want to put an announcement out to an event that's happening this Saturday. It's called A Place to Catch Your Breath. It's a community effort to look at transitional housing. Last year, this event happened and a group of our commissioners were there last year. It was an excellent event with, really, it's the stories. It's the stories of people who have struggled through homelessness and who find their way through it and can shed light on how incredibly important a safe place to sleep is to people and how the health effects of sleeping outside are so detrimental to folks in our community. So this event is open to everyone. I encourage folks to come. It is on May fourth, nine A M. to noon at the Milwaukee Lutheran Church. And another thing I wanted to share, so last week I was at a, they call it a walkability institute. And so the Centers for Disease Control, the directors host this event. There are communities that write a grant to go and spend a few days together, hearing from experts all around the country. And while the institute is called the Walkab- And while the institute is called the Walkability Institute, it's really more like a livable community, it's really about how do we create active, engaged communities? Because what I learned, and I didn't know this, and I would love to see a raise of hands for everyone in the audience and on the commission, if you knew this, because I did not know this, that the second leading cause of preventable death is being, living a sedentary life. Did, you knew that? But I just told you that. So Jim Bernard is the only person, because I told him when I got back. Oh, and Rich Swift is in the audience, and he also knew that. Well, that was a real eye-opener for me when I was at this institute, because I think about all the ways that our culture does not promote, and our policies actually do not promote and encourage activity and connection and community. So with that, one of the, I wanted to share one of the most compelling slides that was presented to us. A presenter, professor from Rutgers University, his name is actually Charlie Brown, presented this slide, one of our great thinkers. So I just want to share it. So if you think about equality, it's where everyone is equal, and if you look at the first slide, you'll see the same level of a box. Well, you look at the next slide, you think about what is equity? It's when you make everybody be able to have the same outcome as, so you raise the different levels of the box. If you think about liberation, you get rid of the fence, you remove the obstacle. So I want to challenge all of us, as we look at our public policies, we promote and develop and devise and scheme and strategize, that we look at totally removing the barriers. And if we want, if we're really serious about quality of life and promoting healthy communities, we will all work together to look past everything that is in our way to get to where we can really, really help people that live in our community. So that is what I have for today.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So because there are a few people out, I'm going to do a lot of their stuff, and since you've covered a lot of that stuff. But the one, one thing I did do is that every five years, Clackamas County, everybody needs to do a, participate in a regional emergency management planning exercise. We did medical count, medical countermeasures exercise called PACE here at the county. I had an opportunity to stop by our emergency management and look at what we're doing, and the participants had some ideas, and I thought it was very interesting. But this measure was a countermeasure to a, wasn't measles, it was a release of a virus in a football game in Portland, I think that's what it was. But it was a release, and then how the counties, how American Medical Response, Oregon City Healthcare Centers, Clackamas County Medical Examiners, Canby Fire District, City of Estacadas, and others respond to it. And that is to supply vaccines and to put specific sites around the county where people could go get that, the vaccine. It also included, so we had accounting people, because you have to keep track of your, your time, your spending, the rental costs, security, and all those things so that you can be reimbursed by the federal government, should you reach a certain level. So yesterday I was there and watched the participants play the game of mock medical emergency, and I thought it was very interesting. At some level, the county, well, I signed a mock, I guess, order that set up the process, and we kind of joke about this sometimes, because we're always talking about closing the bars when, you know, there'd be an opportunity. So at some level, they have to come to the commission to move forward in more restrictions, you know, keeping populations separated from others. It's kind of interesting that in Salem, we're talking, or they're talking about measles vaccine and how to address that. A matter of fact, this morning I was listening on the radio about some countries that are dealing with other issues and how they're going to separate populations to make sure that, you know, you don't infect other, other populations. I mean, just somebody with measles who goes to a basketball game can literally infect the entire room. And so the legislature is looking at, you know, requirements for vaccines. And I remember, and I'm still, maybe Martha knows, but I tried to look it up today, but I remember actually participating in this event as a child. Milwaukee High School, the entire town lined up and went to Milwaukee High School. At one point, it was a shot, you're scratching your arm, I got, we all got a shot. Polio.
Polio.
I tried to look that up.
Measles, I remember measles.
Polio and measles. You know, we did this, and I can imagine it was a huge exercise. And then we also did it in our schools. But I remember as a kid lining up, I tried to look up 50s, 60s, what that was. I, I know polio was one, because I actually had a brother who we thought had polio at one point, but he ended up not. But it was quite the exercise. I want to thank the, the employees and our service providers for the work they do, very important. I'd say that one thing we do need to do better is volunteer. Make sure we have a good pool of volunteers ready to go to work should this situation happen again, I mean, should it really actually happen. So it was a great exercise, I'm sure they learned a lot, and will be ready for that event should it ever occur. So thank you, staff, for your hard work. I mean, there were people from every department there. With that, Ken mentioned that he would announce when the Granges were having events, so Harding Grain is having, Grange is having a plant and craft sale May 4th and 5th. Clark's Grange, Spring Bazaar, May 4th, 9, 9 to 4. Spring Water Grange, first Saturday breakfast, every first Saturday, a breakfast from 7 to 11. It's a good deal, a good breakfast for five bucks. Beaver Creek, first Saturday breakfast, 8 to 11 through June, and during the summer, they're off in the summer, but they have a Mother's Day breakfast, May 12th, 8 to 1. Again, good price, $7, French toast, French toast, biscuits, and gravy. Sounds like a country breakfast. And then Redland Grange, May 19th, starts their farmer's market. Warner Grange, May 20th, 7 p.m., commissioners meeting with the public to discuss the $30. Oh, I didn't even know about this. VRF fee that we've enacted, which would give us, and then also to talk about the new courthouse. So with that, I'll move on to dogs.
You're doing a lot today.
Yes. This is Max.
Oh, Max.
A German Shepherd mix, he's eight years old, weighs 60-ish pounds, and is looking for a quiet home and persons to call his own. He can be a bit shy at first, but he is working, but he is working well at coming out of his shyness, and you'll see, he's a sweet boy. He's looking for a home that doesn't have any children, so if you are a quiet home and you are okay with being patient with him, to give him time to feel comfortable, please come and meet him today, or he has time to get comfortable with you, or you with him. Anyway, for more information about Max and other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. So with that, Mother's Day is another week away, right?
Can we get a copy of the, just so we can, can we give it to our?
Sure.
Our folks.
Our people.
Yeah, our folks.
Martha, if you want to go, we should carpool out on a.
Okay, yeah, I would love to do that.
Go on this weekend to the one, one of them with Ken.
Yeah, see, and I've got Saturday morning, I'm serving at Lakewood, because we're having a group of donors out, so I get to serve them breakfast, but I'll try and make the hell, you know, I may be done till noon. And then it's the opening of, see, Oregon City's farmer market, I think, is opening, and Milwaukee. So there are two farmer's markets as well that are kind of going on this weekend.
So with that, have a great weekend, and we're adjourned.